Any objections here or not?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble? Ms. Lacy?
Yeah.
Ms. Revere?
Yes.
Ms. Poste-Petis.
Gentlemen, I have a question for Louisiana College 4A. Public comments, comments from the public are allowed in the court of Louisiana by statute forty-two code and eleven section ten forty-four. And for century, they landed to agenda to be considered during meeting, three minutes per person and fifteen minutes per topic. Gentlemen, number five, presentation from the oil firm, Mr. King.
Hello, everyone. I'm not sure if my notes, but unfortunately, this is the first year since, I don't know, it's been doing thirty years. We're not ready for the audit review at this point. We're we're running behind and there's several factors that should be considered of that. And and I talked to the mayor earlier this week and let him know that we probably won't be able to get it before the end of the year. I've reached out to legislature water eliminator and told Ms. Gail that we were having a situation. She acted like an extension would not be the issue. So that the plan is to go ahead and apply for an extension, so we'll give it more time. She said, we'd have to address why we're asking for the extension. And, you know, the basic reasons are with the transition, you know, Ms. Davis was hired in February, so she hadn't had a full year. So that's one of the reasons. Michelle, who were rocking along, you know, I've done some looking at the numbers. We usually have about five, four hundred and fifty hours for the audit. This year, we're we're at three hundred and twenty-eight, so we've got about a hundred and forty hours. Plus, this year, we have to do procedures for the oil project job received. So we have to do like a hundred and ninety hours in eleven working days, so that's seventeen hours a day. If I had staff that weren't committed, because we're usually finished with this job now, we're moving on to other stuff. So we're just on top of everything, there's no move or anything, so we'll do something for the first. So the other, you know, another reason was Michelle was followed past away like when we were in the heat of doing everything. And so we just didn't have to transition for more to the new CFO. So there's a lot of reasons that things were not together enough. Moving good until December and then just kind of having information to click the order. So is there any questions or concerns, things you want to ask me? Mayor, I'll begin with few rules in that response to legislature volunteer officially. And after my talk to her today, she acted like that would not be a issue.
So when, about when will it be?
We're gonna ask for an extension, I think, till February, into February. I want to get it done. If we move into February, it's just gonna jam myself. The sooner we can get it done, the better for us and the better for you all. It's not gonna have any impact on anything other than just not being done. But we need to get it done for us and for y'all. So we're gonna push it, it'll probably be first of January, we'll hit a real hole, try to knock it out before it's end of January, first of January. But I don't see us getting it done in eleven working days.
You have a question? All right, thank you, Ken.
All right, thank y'all.
Gentlemen, six, discuss the status of the compliance order by DEQ received on December the fourth, twenty twenty-three, concerning the wastewater treatment plant. Is there a call?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Essentially, I I put in front of y'all basically a compliance order that was drafted by DEQ and sent to y'all. Essentially, a compliance order notes things that are, you know, issues or violations. And it's kind of the beginning of setting up a timetable to resolve whatever it is they found. They have a couple, if you look on the first page, the basically two, three, four, and five are kind of their main items. Some of some of these are just simply like almost footkeeping issues that can can be resolved, but they go back to twenty twenty-one. So obviously, it's a, they do a pretty thorough review. And a a couple others had to do with y'all sludge handling and stuff like that. So thank goodness, we finally have the box in and thank goodness, we're getting ready to finish the influent pump station at the plant, so we can start working on the sludge. Essentially, what will happen or what we recommend happen, and this has already happened, the people who do your permitting now have asked for an extension till February. And basically, the extension is to put a timetable on how fast you can get things corrected. And most of these, I think, can be corrected without, how should I put it, without purchasing anything, you know? Just basically getting rid of your sludge, getting a couple pieces of equipment working, and obviously tightening up some of the things on the on the file, on the filing and whatnot. One thing, and this is just, it sounds counterintuitive, but it's actually, I wasn't super sad when I got it. Because whenever we apply for all these grants and loans, one of the first things they ask you for, are you under a compliance order? Because obviously, those are the ones that are favored when they're picking who gets money to to repair it. So it's a, you know, double edged sword. Now, I will say, I'll go ahead and go to the other extreme. If you just choose to totally ignore it, they have the right to, I can't remember if it's changed, but I think it's like twenty-five thousand dollars a day to fine you for all the days you're beyond the compliance thing up. I've not ever had that happen. Basically, that happens to people who ignore them totally and don't come up with a plan, an implementation plan. Any questions on this, y'all? I mean, it's it's not great to get, but again, it's something that can be addressed, and I don't think it'll cost y'all any money to address other than maybe what stuff you would have had to do anyway. Okay, thank y'all.
All right, gentleman seven, update the improvements of the influent pumps in the wet pit at the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, y'all, if you recall, last month's meeting, we talked about the emergency and what we're gonna do with that influent pump station. And essentially, after they cleaned it out and took a look at it, you could actually see rebar exposed through the concrete, which obviously is not great. So it was in as bad a shape as we kind of thought it would be. And we elected to, since we already have it down, not only stop the leaks coming in, but also go ahead and coat it. And I just wanted to, I attach this, I don't expect anybody to go into the details of the of the coating. But I've been through about, I don't know, three cycles of different kinds of invented coating. This, most coatings are kind of like a paint. They just basically protect, you know, the cover, and if the paint gets a chip in it or something, then obviously, that part gets messed up. The, this is the first coating that actually provides structural integrity. And that's important because you can see our rebar. So we want to have structural integrity. This is, this is a product that's used by the city parish in Baton Rouge, and of course, I'm sure y'all are aware, they've been on multiple billion dollar program for about thirty years. So, you know, they really vet the stuff they spend money on, and this is, you know, one that's, you know, I think, essentially, if your plant, you know, falls apart in the next fifty years, the wet well will still be there. And and the last thing I wanted to, and I pointed this out last time, even if we move the plant, you're gonna have to keep the wet well, because you, all the wastewater comes there, then we'll pump it to wherever the plant is. So this is an investment in the future, too. Any questions?
Sort of an epoxy or?
It it's cementitious, but it's got, you know, other polymers and stuff in it. The the old kind, you've seen, well, the first ones were actual like almost spray paint. Then it got where you had a foam, and then they put the, kind of like a plastic, plastic layer on it. That was the next one, that's what, when you, people say the pink stuff, that's what that is. And this is really the first one that actually provides any structural integrity. So it's, you know, obviously, a big leak, you know? The other option really would have been, quite frankly, if we were concerned enough about the integrity, is all you can do is replace it. You know, because basically, it's a slab, and those are the bars that are taken away. And it's an eighteen inch thick slab, so it's not white.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I know we went to that, but I just kind of want to back up, because I did have a question with the compliance order, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding. I know that, well, the inspection is based upon the equipment, the properly operating. But I do see here some like failure to like five reports. Who does that follow?
Well, you know, y'all have a third party that does your reports, but some of them are done internally. So, you know, I don't know which one, somebody dropped the ball on filing the reports, but just to be, they really didn't kind of, this is like three years of data, and they don't have really that many mistakes. So I feel like they're being maybe a little heavy handed on y'all for that. But what happens is, they probably came, did the inspection, and they're like, whoa, this place, you know? So then they go back and file and microanalyze it coming forward. To me, none of these things, believe me, some of our clients do stuff that's a lot more egregious than this. This is just basically like slip ups. It's not, you know, people ignoring things.
A little more clarity on that. So essentially, we have a third party lab that does the testing. It involves calculations to determine if your samples are in compliance. However, those reports are signed by the wastewater supervisor, Mr. Bradford. And some of those reports contain erroneous calculations. So in their eyes, it was not fine. But essentially, it's a third party vendor, and it does fall on them to perform all of the calculations and the documentation. All Mr. Bradford does is signs off. So it's really just a hiccup.
And in Mr. Bradford's defense, nobody goes back and checks the labs, I mean, that's what they do.
That's what you're paying the people for.
They're just saying, when violations come, it just won't make sure they get, you know, personal.
Yeah, and and actually, one of the things that, you know, kind of works in our favor, the person who owns the lab that y'all happen to be using has a very good relationship with the folks at DEQ. So, you know, he can obviously explain it, and he didn't have any problem getting an extension, so that that's good. I think, so I'm confident he'll, will address it on y'all's behalf well. Thank you, thank y'all.
All right, gentleman eight, consider a recommendation, our Toby Washington as a post certified officer at Steph Gray one, uh, at G X.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilor, how days? Last Wednesday, I presented Mr. Cobra Washington for hiring. He had a great interview, passed his matrix. He's post certified, he has a good personality. I think he'll he'll fit well into what I have in my department as far as serving and protecting the people of this city, and I want to give him an opportunity. I have him here, if y'all have any additional questions, if y'all want to ask, ask him.
I motion, Councilwoman Lacy, second by Councilman Revere. Any objections here or not?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble? Ms. Lacy? Yes. Ms. Revere?
Yes.
Ms. Poste-Petis?
Gentlemen, nine, consider a variance adjustment on Eighth Street. Consider a variance adjustment of eight feet for four four one Courthouse Street due to a failed form of the Board of Adjustment Members at the October fifth meeting.
As you know, Council, the Board of Adjustments considers variances and variances only when property owners run into instructions with current setbacks versus what the setbacks were when the properties were initially constructed or acquired. This is a property at four forty-one Courthouse owned by Jason and Sherman Shake Snyder. Essentially, they want to build a residence behind their business, which funds on Johnson. And there's a rear structure at the back of the property that interferes with creating the twenty foot setback. So they submitted a mayor's request, it was properly advertised. However, we did not obtain a form at the Board of Adjustments meeting scheduled for October fifth, twenty twenty-three. And so we presented it to the council to authorize and approve, reducing the twenty foot front setback to eight feet. They submitted several affidavits from neighbors of no objection. So I would recommend the council approve the variance. Affidavits from neighbor property owners, letters of no objection, essentially, which is always helpful when you're talking about mayor's. Currently, our setbacks are twenty feet in the front, eight feet on the side, and fifteen feet in the rear. But very few properties have those current setbacks, because they were built prior to those being put in place when the zoning ordinance was adopted in twenty sixteen. So you're gonna have a lot of properties that don't even have those current setbacks. And it's it's not gonna be out of character with other properties on the street, so that's really no, really no objection. No one showed up at the meetings to voice any opposition, we just couldn't have a meeting, because we didn't have a form.
Motion.
Second.
I motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Revere. Any objections? Here or not?
Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Hubble? Lacy?
Yeah.
Ms. Revere?
Yes.
Gentlemen, ten, consider a variance adjustment of eight feet for five, six, seven Avenue C due to a failed form of Board of Adjustment Members at the October fifth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting.
Again, this request came in, Susan Langwell owns the property, she has to build a new residence. It's actually a completely vacant lot, but there is a huge under the oak tree on the west border of the property, which kind of limits what she can do without any capability. So she presented a request, as it was advertised at the same time as the courthouse street property, that she would like to reduce her variance to eight feet also, so she could build the residence of her choose.
No objection.
Well, this one was a little bit different in that the request came in a little later. So, and those are not required. The reason that, the reason that we, the reason that we encouraged Mr. Shake Snyder to do that is because his property was originally zoned DMU in the rezoning. So it was also rezoned. And because of the rezoning, there, what you can do on a DMU property is a little different than you can do on a residential, residentially zoned lot. So because we had kind of two issues going at the same time, we suggested that he get letters of no objection from his neighbors. Her property is already zoned residential. All she's doing is moving closer to try to preserve the oak tree, which is also a very important consideration for people in that neighborhood.
I motion.
And I mean, like, we just, I guess, it seemed like the Board of Adjustments haven't obtained all the members, so we, look like they may be getting a lot of, making a lot of decisions. So I guess it is very important that we get all the information that we can when we make these decisions, should have, so I don't think we just kind of.
No, no, I, I, no problem, this is just a precaution. That, you know, if if those were recent resignations from that board, and I believe the mayor has asked you to submit names to repopulate the board. So hopefully, we'll get some citizens willing to volunteer and come forward.
So basically, she's just trying to build around the oak tree?
Essentially, she's building the house with a court, but it's, y'all don't have a picture of it, submitted, drawn. So there was a drawing submitted, and it it, she's essentially building her house in a U shape to go around the oak tree. So the oak tree's gonna be like off, like I said, it's on the west side of the property, so it's gonna be like a courtyard. It's gonna be front and back. No comment.
So, so Council, you know, obviously, for the, for these two issues, you're at, you're being asked to decide something that normally would not go to the council, but because you don't have a functioning Board of Adjustment right now. You know, obviously, in order to keep things turning, that's why you were asked to chime in. As Councilwoman Lacy just alluded to, you know, you kind of have two options going forward. You haven't really had any issues where you had to call upon your Board of Adjustment. But moving forward, you know, kind of two paths, and you can go, one is to, you know, basically, repopulate your Board of Adjustment, and you continue to have a Board of Adjustment. The other option is that, you know, you are not required by law to have a Board of Adjustment. So the other option is to basically abolish by ordinance, you have to adopt an ordinance to do it, get rid of the Board of Adjustment, and have all those duties that were performed by the Board of Adjustment, just make that a a council decision.
The bottom line is it comes to us eventually anyway.
It would not actually come to the council. That's kind of the the function of a Board of Adjustment in terms of these variances. I guess, back when this concept was created, what it does is, is the council appoints these people who will serve on the Board of Adjustment. Anybody who's agreed by a decision made from the city can appeal to the Board of Adjustment. They don't like the decision rendered by the Board of Adjustment, their next step is to go to district court. So that's basically the, I guess, the thinking was, it it removes the council and politics from the decision making in terms of granting these variances or not. So it's one of those things, it's, you have the option to do that, and obviously, the city did way back when, but it's not necessarily a required board. So it's something to think about in terms of of how the the council wants to move forward, in terms of the Board of Adjustment.
Any anti motion? Yeah. Number one. Motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Revere. Any objections? Anybody wish to be heard, here or not?
Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Hubble? Lacy?
Yeah.
Ms. Revere?
Yes.
Ms. Poste-Petis?
Thank you. Gentlemen, another, consider approving the final plaque contingent upon completion as per the plan is a west view crossing first filing phase two lot seven through one thirty. Parcel owners Nolan McKay, WBRLLC, and ORWVXLLC, as unanimously recommended by the planning and zoning commission. Gentlemen, take it. We got this.
Ladies of Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm Jim Tatum, I'm with Tatum Engineering, representing the Nolan McKay properties, WBX properties in the development of Westview Crossing. Tonight, we're asking for a conditional approval of the final plaque. This is, this is consistent with our request we made earlier on the first filing phase one. Tonight, we're talking about the first filing phase two, which I can show you in the overall, can everybody see that? In the overall development scheme, we're talking about the area that's in the yellow. It's five, it's a fifty-four lot, it's the second phase of work as a part of the, the project all told will probably be about ten or eleven different phases. This is the second phase, the first phase, seventy-six lots, this is fifty-four lots. The first lot, I mean, the first phase, I think there's about, is it fifty now, or about fifty sold? Right at fifty houses have already been sold in this development, it's doing quite well. The second phase is under construction, possibly the end of this week or next week, they'll be building curbs, and then the actual asphalt pavement will follow that. And we went before the planning commission and asked for conditional approval. We're not asking, I mean, be clear, we're not asking for any waivers, variances, or any type of special consideration. We're just asking for a conditional approval, so that when the work's complete, we would have fulfilled our obligation with the planning commission and also with the council. We're still subject to the completion, we're still subject to the final inspections, we're still subject to the certifications and testing, no exceptions, and no variances requested. So that's essentially the the crux of our request tonight. I'd ask for your support on that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, address any concerns. And again, this is consistent with the method that we used on the first filing phase one. This is first filing phase two.
How many houses for the phase two?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four?
Yes, ma'am.
And the first phase is fifty? The first phase, they have fifty?
Seventy-six total, about fifty of them are now sold.
So, okay, I thought it was about fifty, okay.
Shortly, we'll be, we'll be starting the third phase of development, which will be a little further north and on the western limits of the property. We're not quite there yet, but it's coming soon, because the sales are so, they've been so successful.
And what they're selling for, around what price range?
I think the houses are starting right at under two hundred into one nineties, and then they go on up.
They definitely did, I think, well, they were thirty, eighty, somewhere there, because the last one, so it's, I don't know.
On the gallon of milk, it goes up every time you go to the store. Prices are moving up, and of course, interest rates have gone up a little bit, and that's affected sales somewhat, but they're moving, they're moving houses.
From the very beginning, I'm mainly, just the final product, you know, I, we do need rooftop. You know, my concern has always been that many, six hundred, over six hundred, I think it is.
Yes.
And granted, that's not gonna happen overnight, it'll be five, six year process, I guess, four or five year process.
Well, several.
Several?
That's six years.
Yeah.
My concern is the living and making sure that the people within our community, who may want to continue to live in 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 the city, who may be interested in becoming a homebody, being able to afford these homes, and we don't have people from everywhere else that's coming in. We want to make sure that we take care of home first, and at two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, I don't know if that's even being, um, um, thinking more like in, in, as in community, and the people within the scope of this city. Like, and to develop in all the city, look like you would be, you know, thinking more about the ones within the city, who could afford this, these homes, who want to maintain their residency in the city. Do anybody think about that? Do they consider that?
Yeah, I would say not to put nobody's business out, but they have people from Fort Hills moving back there, it may not be the majority, though. I personally have witnessed someone from Fort Hills moving back there, so, I mean, the prices, you know, uh.
It's really not.
Those are market considerations. Not only market considerations, it is a function of the overall scheme. A private, when you pass the zoning laws in twenty sixteen, you need to build a lot size fifty feet. So when you have it, that determines how many lots you can put on there. And then that determines how big of a house you can put on it, and within the setbacks that are encompassing that is on yours. And then all of those things are market functions. The house is not gonna sell if no one wants to buy. So it's really, it has nothing to do with the developers, per se.
Like, the materials went up at one point in time?
Pardon me?
Materials went, uh, one more time?
Those are all free market variables that, you know, you 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 make an offer, that you just accept it or you negotiate. But it is really not something that can be regulated in the sense of, right, in the sense of the council taking some action to say, oh, this, that, and the other in terms of the the value of the property.
Let me add this to, to address your concerns. The first, I'm an engineer, sir, but I'm not a real. The, uh, first, I'm an engineering surveyor, I'm not a real estate guy, we've got real estate experts that they can, uh, say otherwise, but just as a Louisiana citizen and, and seeing and understanding the different communities in and around the back of the area, including Port Island, the, the hidden opportunity that may be here is that in developing a new project like this where the homes are maybe a little more expensive, it gives an opportunity for your folks that are in Port Island to, to move up to a ni- to a newer, nicer home, maybe a little bigger home, and that creates a buying opportunity for other folks that are in Port Island to buy existing residences. So there is a, uh, there's a, there's a sort of a trickle-up type trickle-down, however you wanna describe it, opportunity here. And evidently the, uh.
It normally helps everybody's property that.
Well, and it will, and of course you get, rooftops create numbers and that helps with the distribution and prepares taxes to the city. And you've got a nice new subdivision with new streets in it, new infrastructure, new war lines, fire protection, all the things that you need, and, uh, uh, these new subdivisions really don't require much maintenance, they don't cost the city much money, maybe for twenty or thirty years. And then you get into the street overlays and that's sort of maintenance. But, uh, the new, the new projects or the new products here and the new subdivision projects that come along, new houses, that creates an opportunity for folks to come in and live in, in new facilities, new housing facilities, and, and, uh, and that, that opens the door and opportunity for other folks.
Just to completely say that the house that was listed today was listed at two hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and forty dollars, seventeen hundred and eighty-two square feet, comes down to above thirty-five fifty-four cents a square foot. That's the listing price, there's a little wiggle room in there, but Brown will tell you that. Right now, you're looking at one fifteen, one thirty-five a square foot. Uh, and this be a new construction, you know, that's just kind of a nature of the beast, so.
They look good.
They have some smaller than that, but not to be too, sorry, try to surprise them, they might have some Olivia lower, but not drastically.
In addition, council, they also have incentives and programs to the federal government. If you're a government employee or a teacher or a enforcement officer, they give you discounts and so forth, you know, to purchase a home in these, uh, neighborhoods that's coming up, so, uh, you know, that's a benefit, uh, you know, for the, the system, the, the community, especially if you're on first home loan.
Which has a home loan, uh, still not, so it could be a, it's paid, you know.
Any other question? Anti-motion?
I'm moving.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Gordon, any objections? Hear none?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Hubble? Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Revere?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, thank you, ma'am. Ten nine eleven A, consider a recommendation of the planning and zoning board to approve re-subdividing lots ten and eleven, square twenty-one of Con SD PA six through two fifty-three, on this way address five five two California Street, this is over.
So you should have a drawing, huh? No?
Um, yes, it's in the contract, part of the book. That's all taken.
Yes, so as currently situated, uh, this property has a structure that has a California Street address, it's on the corner of California and Sixth Street. But it's already two lots, ten and eleven. The property owner wants to re-subdivide those lots, creating one lot on California Avenue, one lot on Sixth Street. And both lots comply with the current zoning ordinance for lot size and frontage, and the structure already complies with the zoning ordinance relative to setbacks, so it's just a re, recon, reorientation essentially, so instead of two lots on California, you have one on Sixth Street and one on California. And the planning and zoning commission recommend, recommended approval unanimously. Any question?
Moving. Second. Motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Brown, any objections? Hear none?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble? Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ten nine twelve, state authorized the mayor to approve a six-month probationary pay increase for the following employees, Rosen Drainage, Jerryl Johnson from one O one C to one O one D, effective date, uh, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Jared Johnson from one O eight A to one O eight B, effective date, uh, December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Darryl Lewis from one fourteen I to one fourteen J, effective date, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. And the wastewater treatment, Marcus Williams from one twelve B to one twelve C, effective December fifth, twenty twenty-three. And the meter reader, Daniel Horne from one O seven I to one O seven J, effective twelve fifteen of twenty twenty-three. I'm moving.
Second.
And we're gonna do this in group vote? Counsel?
I can do it.
All right, I got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Gordon. Anyone, anyone want to object, any objections? You know, it's, hear none?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble? Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ten nine thirteen, consider authorizing the mayor to approve promotions for the following employees effective December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. The Rosen Drainage, we have Jerry Thomas Junior from part-time to full-time labor two, step increase to one O eight eight, effective December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And we have John B Adams from part-time to full-time labor one, step increase from one O one C, effective date, one fourteen of twenty twenty-three. And these were two, uh, part-time people that we hired over the summer, and, uh, they have turned out to be excellent employees and we just, we let them come on board.
I'm moving.
Second.
I got a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman, like, Councilman Lacy, any objections? Hear none?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble? Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ten nine fourteen, consider authorizing the mayor to approve pay raises, pay, pay increase due to additional duties, Rosen Drainage, uh, Larry Hayes from one O seven B to one O seven C, and Terrell Rogers from one O eight A and one O eight B. And council, uh, at first it was just one employee, but after Mr. Gordon made the, was telling me, what's gonna happen when, you guys off, and I told her I'd take over, but then what if he's off all week? So I, I, I'm, I'm gonna make a suggestion that we, you know, make it, uh, two individuals that we promote this, uh, it's gonna be a two percent increase for these two individuals. And what they were doing, uh, opening and closing the, uh, well, the additional bills will include the car park unlocking and locking the doors from eight AM to dust respectfully and maintaining and cleaning the men's and women's restrooms, and this will start effectively, uh, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
When you say dust, which is like eight o'clock?
I know, it's supposed to get dark.
Cause you know, once the time change, you're gonna start getting later?
Yes, ma'am.
With the time, so I guess we should just say till eight o'clock?
Why don't we put a time on it, because dusk, it, it get dark right now at five thirty.
Right.
So.
I'm just saying, when the time change, you should change to eight o'clock.
Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah, I just want to first say thank y'all for even, uh, doing this, it's happy to see y'all chose two people to do it. I, I'd like to move, make a motion.
I got a motion by Councilman Brown?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gordon, any objections? Hear none?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble? Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes, ma'am.
I'm moving. Ten nine fifteen, state authorized the mayor to approve a pay increase for thirty years of service for the following employee, Department of Public Works. Aaron Landry, thirty years of service, two percent pay increase effective December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Council, as you know, we all, we give all employees, uh, uh, two percent step increase every five year increase, and Mr. Landry, this is his thirty year effective, uh, December thirteenth, and he's serving of that, uh, two percent.
Are we gonna give him a plaque and not just thirty years of service, or just a two percent pay increase?
Just a two percent pay increase.
No plaque?
No plaque, we'll give him a plaque any time.
Wow, I'm working out thirty years for me.
I got a, I got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Brown.
I don't think Mr. A. We're about to plaque.
No, I don't think so either, this occurs in thirty years.
Yeah.
Any objections from all of you? Hear none?
Brown?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble? Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ten nine sixteen, create a meter reader's training position in anticipation of a vacancy due to retirement. Council, as I mentioned before, uh, uh, Mr. Terry Coy, uh, and he's on the verge of, of retiring, and we don't know when that date comes, it could be next month, it could be at the end of the year, so we need to start training that third person with addition to the new subdivision that are coming in. And, uh, 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 we have a person that, uh, we have in mind that has been working with the, uh, with the meter reader at this particular time, and, uh, if y'all create this, uh, position there, we're gonna move you into that position.
Mark Anderson, does he want, uh, learning out on Mr. Terry on first?
Well, we already have Mr. Daniel Horne, and he's also, he, in fact, we just had him. Six months ago, I think so, yeah, two people, yeah.
Mayor, we're gonna need a, uh.
With the pay?
Yeah, a, a, a classification for the position on a pay scale, something like.
Um. I'd be the same as Mr.
Would it be with the experience, if they have experience?
Yeah.
A job description will need to be created that has all the duties for the training. Yeah, so a new job description will be need, needed to be created for this position, and then you gotta place it, you know, where, where, what level of your salary schedule it.
Yeah, he will start, he will start off at one O, with no experience, he will start off at one O seven A. Mr. Horne, when he came, he had experience, that's why he started off at I. But it'd be one O seven A.
I'm moving.
Second.
I got a motion by Councilman Revere, second by Councilman Brown, any objections? Hear none?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble? Mr. Lacy?
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
So we don't have to make that job description before we decide upon, like, so we can make sure we have all that agreed upon before we decide upon it, and it be, you know, no, no issues down the line?
Yeah, the job description is a meter reader. Yeah, he start off at the, the least, which is he has, uh, one O seven A.
So it don't have to have a, a, another, uh, description, it just stays meter reader, not, okay.
I would say create one mayor, just say, you know, the majority of the stuff would probably be the same as the meter reader, just have a meter reader training, have the job title, that way it corresponds to, to the, to the, the particular position.
Perfect.
And then if HR can bring that back for next month's council meeting, have the council approve that job description.
As a training?
I would suggest creating a position as a meter reader. Every new employee goes to a six-month training and probationary period anyway. That way, it, it, it's already on the books as a meter reader, because it, it could very well be that he transitions into meter reader before Mr. Coy leaves, and then you gotta come back and then do it again. So if you create a third meter reader position, he's already gonna be trained when he comes on board. You don't have to distinguish between trainee and meter reader at this current phase, because the objective is to create a position that allows you to pay him at that level while he's training anyway. But if you create it as a trainee, then you gotta put somebody in it as a trainee, which means you're gonna move him back to meter reader, and you're gonna still have a trainee position.
So they would just have to do the six-month period.
He's gonna have that, that's all employees.
So the trainee will be on the same, the same one O seven?
Yeah, 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 it's just a trainee because he's new and he hasn't necessarily been exposed to all of the job.
If they're both on the same level of, of salary schedule, then that, that's fine as well. I, I, I was assuming that they would not be.
So we could just drop trainee?
You're just basically creating another meter reader position that if the council knows, that will basically be for a trainee right now.
Okay. All right, ten nine seventeen. Consider introducing an order to make the capital outweigh fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budgets by increase of five, fifty-five thousand dollars to cover the costs of updating the controls for the air conditioning in that city home.
Right now, it's freezing.
Want me to turn it down?
Yes.
Turn it down.
I think I'm a little cold.
But in your package, council, we gave you the facility automated proposals, and, uh, that is the base proposal to, uh, replace all existing, the three variable air, air volume AHUs, the thirty variable air control boxes, one constant valve, valve, volume AHU, and four outdoor air system fans, thirty-one LL, LCD thermostat, and, uh, a graphical programming will be created by, for the end of the user to view and modify time schedules, set points, and system alarms. The controls have the ability to be, be viewed and modified at any designated location, B, C, or remotely if allowed by IT administration. And that's what this, uh, process is. And right now, um, the current system, uh, the controls that control the current system, uh, the computer that control it, we don't know what happened to it, and we disconnected kind of the computer, didn't know that it actually controls the air condition, so, uh, we don't have a password or anything to, uh, control it, so that's the reason why we have all the, uh, files, but they still, it's different.
And this is the only proposal we have, is, is pulled here.
Yeah, it's the only proposal.
In the meeting, I thought we talked about.
Getting more proposals?
Getting enough proposals, maybe they could chat around here.
So it, it, it might be difficult to, to get another proposal, you, you, the system is already in place. Facility automation already maintains multiple systems at city home. So this is the company that's already doing these things, that, that comes in when we have a problem. The problem is, is that those thermostats are probably outdated and no longer really available. Uh, they are rather expensive, but it doesn't matter, you can change all the thermostats. It's a, it's a, it's a remote operated system, and we'll have access to it remote. So this is the fix. It probably costs you more. It probably costs more if you go with another company, because they're probably, you know, that, that, that changes in technology, that changes in, uh, equipment. So, if you wanna maintain as much as what you have now, this is the proposal. If you wanna go to another vendor, then they may require more than you bargained for in terms of additional expenditures to, 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 to have compatible equipment.
And we would end up receiving the passwords and.
Well, well. Who, who, who knew it was remote operation? I mean, a lot of this is prepaid to all of us, but, uh, we found that out. And as a computer program, it's, it's running, but it's not running efficiently, it's not running like it's supposed to run. And sometimes it doesn't run at all, as you've all been aware of when we come to meetings and the like. And, I mean, I, I haven't been to work in my office for probably three months, because it fluctuates between meat locker and oven. So, this is the hand we've been built. At a place.
And council, this is only an introduction, so, uh, it'll be another thirty days before we bought up for adoption. But I do have, uh, Mr. Dennis Cole is supposed to get to me, uh, Monday, saying tell me today to have somebody to come and look at it. Uh, how are you gonna have the contact with, with that interview? But if some other company comes available that, uh, can give the support, still talk to you. But I'd say this is just an introduction.
Yeah, motion.
Yes.
Sir.
I got a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Revere, any objections? Anybody wish to be heard on this?
You made a motion to approve this proposal?
Introduction.
Introduction, okay.
No one wish to be heard? No problem.
Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Hubble? Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. General eighteen, consider ending to the executive session pursuant to Louisiana statute forty-two, code seventeen, one and two, and eight and four, to discuss a EEOC complaint asserted against the city. Take a motion.
Make the motion to double.
Motion by Councilwoman Gordon, second by Councilwoman Lacy, any objections? Here or not?
Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Hubble? Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Revere?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right. All right.